All right, if you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in lone decibel prayer. Thank you. All right. We will call this meeting to order. Are there any visitors' remarks concerning the agenda?
Yes, Walter Woods. I think you should probably resend out the landscaping bidding, because they were not opened in a public meeting. Not only, I don't think it was advertised correctly, the meeting that you did have, but even if it was advertised correctly, you never uploaded an agenda. And it has to be open to a public meeting. It is for $43,000 and wasn't opened to a public meeting, like required by law. That's not just the Sunshine Act. That's your big procurement laws that you violated by doing this. So I'd really like if you consider redoing it, especially since, who opened the bids?
Michelle and I.
So.
When is a public meeting?
It was a public meeting.
No, it was not.
Yes, it did.
Did you upload the agenda for it?
There is no agenda. It's a public opening of a bid.
Yes.
To advertise that way.
Based upon the Sunshine Act.
I didn't see it advertised.
Yes, yes.
Who, where was it advertised?
In the Daily Review.
When were they opened?
It was April 30th at 10:00 a.m.
Yeah, I didn't, I read the Daily Review legal ads every day. I didn't see it advertised.
It was mentioned halfway through the solicitation for proposals is where it's mentioned that it's going to be open in a public meeting. But you never advertised the actual public meeting. So who was here? Because you have to open with it in front of a witness. And I don't think the government agency can be the witness itself. And the chief clerk can't be the witness, because her son's the proposal that won. Like, you see all the mistakes here, right? I highly recommend that you reconsider or accepting that bid and redoing it. Thank you.
All right, any other visitors' remarks concerning the agenda?
Um, I would like to ask which proposal for the bridge landscaping, which bridge would it be?
It's all of them.
All the bridges in the county.
Yep.
What does that entail?
Cleaning out brush around the 52 bridges in the county.
Thank you for that.
All right, any other visitors' remarks concerning the agenda? Hearing none, unfinished business, consider approving the minutes of April 24th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider awarding the bid for landscaping to Sheddens Lawn Care at a bid of $43,375 for a three-year term. That's, that is the sum for the three years.
Make motion for accept that.
Aye, second. So, um, this is going to be for which facilities?
Courthouse 91 and Whiteford.
Courthouse 91 and Whiteford.
All right, we have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. New business, consider proclaiming the month of May 2025 as Treatment Court Awareness Month in Bradford County. The proclamation will be read at a service on the courthouse steps on May 14th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And again, we will be doing that May 14th on the courthouse steps.
They do a tremendous, they do a tremendous service.
Absolutely. It's a great program.
Yep.
All right, consider proclaiming the week of May 19th, 2025, or 19th through the 25th, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Bradford County. And I believe we have, who's going to be reading the proclamation?
Let's have it know. Have you guys got it?
I have a copy.
Okay.
It's just a prayer and I could tell.
All right, if you don't mind standing up, if you want to just stand up and...
Yeah, of course. Uh, so good morning, everyone. My name is Nora Gacy. I'm an EMT for Drexel. Before reciting the proclamation, I'd love to give some, a quick synopsis on the history of Guthrie EMS. In the early days, injured railroad workers were often tricked for this at the hospital by wheelbarrows. It wasn't until the late 1800s that the region saw its first ambulance service, led by a horse named Dolly and a buggy driven by lineman Bo. The first Model T ambulance was purchased in 1916. And in the 1920s, the second motorized ambulance was added to the fleet. On January 11th, 1955, the Tuanda Ambulance Association was officially established, with its sole sponsor being Legion Post Number 42. At that time, the cost of an emergency transport was only $10, plus an additional 10 cents per mile. In 1972, there were eight members of the Tuanda Ambulance Association who became certified EMTs. In 2021, statewide EMS calls were over 1.8 million. And in 2024, Guthrie Robert Packer Hospital transported a total of 9,502 patients. All right, now for the proclamation. Whereas, emergency medical services are a vital public service. And whereas, the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, emergency medical services have grown to fill a gap by providing important, out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas, the emergency medical service system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas, the members of emergency medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Service Week.
Thank you very much. And we certainly, we absolutely appreciate all you do each and every day to, to help facilitate the speedy care of those who are injured, ill, or whatever the case may be. It's, it has come a long way in a short period of time. It really has. The, the continuum of care, the care from the call coming in to when it's, when the person arrives at the hospital, has changed dramatically over the last 50-plus years. If I'm not mistaken, I think it was 1974 when legislation was passed that EMTs were you could certify as an EMT in the state of Pennsylvania. Enabling legislation was passed then. And I know that the Robert Packer Hospital back then used to have a training facility within the nursing school, where they started the training of EMTs locally back then. It was 1975 was the first class. But it has changed dramatically, and we thank you all. And like you say, from the care, and you brought it up, from the emergency medical dispatch, right through the ambulance showing up, the care that's given there, and then right on through to arrival at the hospital. It's just a huge, huge benefit to our community. Changes the outcomes tremendously of patients, so.
Yeah, we know you guys are working hard and spread thin. You guys do a terrific job. We're very thankful for what you do, and we're glad that you're there. And, you know, I want to just say thank you, because I know that you're in need, and you guys are coming. That's a good thing. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, amazing the difference.
Mr., Mr. Chairman, for all the reasons that have been stated, I move to consider proclaiming the week of, uh, I move to consider proclaiming the week of May 19th through 25th, 2025 as Emergency Medical Services Week in Bradford County.
Yes, I'm sorry.
All right, we have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion?
And I meant to say, I moved, moved to proclaim. I don't move to consider. I moved to proclaim. So apologies. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
That's your grandfather?
That is my great-grandfather, Harry Van Dolly.
That is so cool.
He actually was on the way to Robert Packer Hospital, riding his bicycle on Stevenson Street. He got hit by an automobile. So my grandfather picked him up and took him to the infirmary, where he later passed after 25-plus years of service at Robert Packer Hospital.
From getting hit?
From getting hit on a bicycle, yeah.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And again, thank you all very much for all that you do.
That other picture that's going around, the ambulance looks like Ghostbusters.
It's not Ghost, we had a couple of them.
Yeah, I'm looking at it going, man, why does that look familiar, other than I can remember?
Didn't make that noise, trust me. Consider proclaiming the week of May 5th through 9th, 2025, as Court Employees Appreciation Week in Bradford County. And who, Mary, is going to read the proclamation?
You are. You are? I, I heard you were.
Thank you. Whereas Bradford County Judicial Branch employees are dedicated public servants who strive to perform their jobs each day with professionalism, compassion, dedication, and pride. And whereas Judicial Branch employees make a significant contribution to Bradford County by providing efficient and effective services to ensure that justice is delivered without favor, denial, or delay. And whereas Judicial Branch employees serve as responsible stewards who drive innovation, enhance service deliveries, and improve operations in county courthouses while demonstrating extraordinary leadership to Bradford County and every corner of our county. And whereas the citizens of Bradford County benefit from the services provided each day by Judicial Branch employees. And whereas Judicial Branch Employee Appreciation Week strives to inform citizens in Bradford County and surrounding areas about the quality of our employees, put them into high ethical standards, and the value of the services they perform to increase the satisfaction of those who are being served. And whereas, in recognizing the outstanding service of court employees, we strive to reinforce public confidence in this justice system, foster a culture of appreciation, and acknowledge the critical role these individuals play in maintaining the rule of law.
Thank you.
Therefore, Bradford County Commissioners, by virtue of the authority vested in them and Constitution of laws of Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim the week to maintain as court employee appreciation in Bradford County.
Well, again, you know, same, we want to thank you and everybody that works in, in courts for all that you do. And again, kind of like 911, you don't ever want to have to call it, and you don't want to ever have to come to the courthouse for, but, but the work that you do is indispensable to, to securing the safety and security of our communities through, again, all the work that goes on in courts. And the work that everybody does behind the scenes to see that it's done efficiently and effectively. And, and again, you don't want to have to come here, but we thank you for all that you do.
Yeah, starting with our two terrific judges, right, and their support staff, which you guys are, you know, you guys do such a wonderful job. And, you know, budgeting, you have hands-on in that as well. And it's, I just can't say enough. I'm a big supporter of our two judges and you guys. Thank you.
We are deeply appreciative. And we'll just note that on the agenda, it says May 5th through 9th, and the proclamation is for 4th through the 10th. I'm in favor of giving them an additional two days for the 4th through the 10th.
Give them the whole month.
So if we can. So I'll make a motion to proclaim the week of May 4th through May 10th as Court Employees Appreciation Week in Bradford County.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Again, thank you very much. Consider authorizing the chief clerk to legally advertise a request for proposals for bridge landscaping maintenance.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to second. And again, that's maintenance for all around the 52 bridges in the county to make sure the brush and whatever other debris is cleaned up around them.
So it'd be good to note too, Mr. Chairman, that one of the reasons we have to do this is because we have, we can't find summer help. We always used to have a lot of summer help, and today, we just don't have it. We don't have the workforce. We have to subcontract it. So if anybody out there wants, is looking for work, home from college, stop in and see our maintenance crew, because I'm sure we could hear you. So that, that's why the, we're subcontract tracking this stuff out.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider authorizing the chief clerk to legally advertise a request for proposals for 911 tower landscaping maintenance. And again, similarly, this is the same thing, except thankfully, there's fewer of them. I believe we have about 15 towers right now that we have to maintain, again, clear the brush away, maintain the facility around them.
I move to authorize the chief clerk to legally advertise a request for proposals for 911 tower landscaping maintenance.
I'll second it in support. Keep the brush down, because there are snakes on those mountains.
That is, that is exactly what.
Rattlesnakes.
Yeah. Was, what I was going to suggest is that in some of these more remote locations, up on mountains, et cetera, you want to make sure that that is adequately maintained, so that if somebody has to get up there for an emergency purpose, they're not, number one, it's accessible, and number two, they're not running into any critters.
Yeah, the towers are all part of our whole 911 safety initiative, starting with our broadband and our dark fiber project, going to the 911 buildings, all built in as one unit. So it's important we keep not only more towers put up to help you guys get better radio coverage and our fire companies, but also, um, it just makes it a safer place to live, so you can.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Again, thank you. Consider authorizing the chief clerk to legally advertise the date, time, and location of the Bradford County Redevelopment Authority 2025 meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, and as noted, that has been rejuvenated. It's now been reauthorized and up and going, so we're advertising for the date, time, and locations of the meetings. All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider renewing an agreement with Travelers Insurance to provide fiduciary insurance for the retirement board.
So moved.
Second.
And motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the sale of parcel number, and I won't read the whole parcel number, but it's as per the agenda, a repository sale as outlined in Section 627 of the Pennsylvania Real Estate Tax Sale Law, Act 542 of 1947, to James R. Isaac for $100.
So moved.
Second, and just, I want to make sure everyone's agenda says the same thing. It's 62 point or dash 078 point or da, uh, 202 dash 094 dash 013 dash 001, just so we're all clear.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving an agreement with Trane for an exclusive service procedure for the HVAC equipment at a fee of $2,058 and no sense, and that's for the public safety facility.
So, second, and that came at a recommendation of Trane as something that would assist with the.
Yes, it's an additional programming and upgrade to the system. All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving Resolution 2025-10 to award $12,500 for the Odyssey of the Mines World Competition to be held in Michigan or Detroit? Lansing, Michigan. All right, we, I'll entertain a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to award that.
And second, and just to be clear, that, that is going to be made out, I believe, to Athens Area School District, correct?
The, that's made out to?
No, I'm saying the, the amount of the money, it's going to Athens Area School District to fund it.
Our fund is Lynch-Bustin Odyssey of the Mines.
Okay, so it's to Lynch-Bustin Odyssey.
I just want to be the clarity of who the pay is.
Yeah, so we have our own funds that we open for this, so it's Lynch-Bustin Odyssey of the Mines.
Perfect.
But it's through Athens.
Thank you for the clarification.
And we'll do a presentation when we get done with the meeting.
Yeah, no worries. Yeah.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
Proud of you guys.
Absolutely. We're great.
We've already gone through the presentation. Anybody who wants, you should stick and see it. Wish you well, too, when you go out there, knock it out, make our county proud. You already have made our county proud, but just put us on the map.
We are on the map.
Just going puts us on the map.
They, they gave a.
The whole world verified.
Yeah.
That's right, you're mapping.
We received. We received some information from, from your team about this program, and I encourage you to share it with James and Phillip from the press, because it is quite remarkable.
Yeah, it's phenomenal program. Yep. All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving an agreement with Futurity IT Inc. for software for Emergency Management Agency at a fee of $8,240. And that is for compiling damage assessment information on tablets for FEMA and PIMA submissions after disasters. Hopefully, we don't have to, but anyway.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving Resolution 2025-11, approving a donation to the Commonwealth University of Mansfield for the Municipal Officers Education and Training Commission in the amount of $30,000, and that is an annual submission that we do every year, and it actually helps facilitate the training of a lot of our local police officers.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Consider approving the agreement between Bradford County Children and Youth Services and Cornell Abraxis Group LLC effective March 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2025 inclusive.
So moved. Second, and this is, I believe, for community-based and residential programming for rescues.
Yeah. Your motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the agreement between Bradford County Children and Youth Services and CHOR, Core, Chor Youth and Family Services, effective March 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2025.
So moved. Second, and so CHOR is an acronym that relates to what used to be or is the Children's Home of Reading. So they provide residential, but they also provide, I believe, other services, and that, that's what this is related to.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the amended agreement between Bradford Sullivan County Drug and Alcohol SCA, Single County Authority, and River Valley Regional YMCA Bradford County Branch effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. And that is just a reallocation of some funds to that program.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and county needs an end in it. Consider approving the amended agreement between Bradford Sullivan County, and that one needs an end in it, too. Mental Health and Main Link effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the amended agreement between Bradford Sullivan County Mental Health and Phoenix Peer Service effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025.
So moved. Second.
And motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving an agreement between Bradford County Probation and Central County's Youth Center effective May 8th, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, we will consider the hires and transfers from Julie Ann Dell down through and including Kristen Sealy.
So moved. Second.
And motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Other, moving on, there is no other salary board. On, there's no unfinished business, new business?
I'd like to notice a Sunshine Act violation in the public commentary for.
So noted.
For the salary board.
We will now set the grades and salaries, and we have Matt Allen, our treasurer, as a member of the salary board, from Julie Ann Dell down through and including Kristen Sealy.
I'll make that motion for me, Jim.
Second.
And a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Matt. Moving on, assessment board. There's no unfinished business, new business.
I'd like to note a Sunshine Act violation in the public commentary for the assessment board.
Duly noted. Consider approving the following for tax exemption, and I will consider a motion to table that.
I'll make a motion, or I make a motion to table the agenda item concerning a request for tax exemption of the Salvation Army.
Under what pretense? Just get more info. We need more information.
There's additional information that we need to understand about how this is, what the, the request is.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion to second to table it, so it's tabled for the time being. All right. Visitors' remarks. Walter Woods.
So you guys are only saying you're doing everything legally, but by approving, approving, all right, the landscaping, you probably broke, what, three laws there? Ethics laws, Sunshine Act, and the big procurement law. And, I mean, that, that one, one motion. You couldn't even table it for later to make sure that you weren't violating the law. And that says a whole lot about how much you guys lie about what you're doing. It, it's ridiculous. And I, I would ask a competent attorney whether or not you broke the law there. I've read the motions from your attorney handling the library lawsuit, and I'm not an attorney, but he makes himself sound like a joke. And then he's sending papers to people, saying that he considers any communications harassment, while asking them to contact him again. You hired a joke, an idiot, in my opinion, for an attorney, and he's giving you advice on how to run these meetings, and it's making you look horrible. And the fact that you said that you would have your attorney provide us an explanation of why it wasn't breaking the law to end the library board, after you had been sued, didn't provide anything, and then said that you couldn't provide anything because you were being sued on a different issue. So you lied. You said you would do something, and you refuse to do it now, for a reason that had already existed before you had said that.
All right, time's up. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, um, our attorney is competent, and I would, I would, very, that firm's represented this county for decades, but I would warn, you can call us. But I would warn, you can call us all the names you want, because we're elected, there are libelous laws, but he's private, he has private practice. He does not cover the same libelous law. So I would very much watch your, I would watch your name calling to somebody that has a private business because you would, could be held liable for slavery. So that's all I wanted to say.
We're calling him a liar.
So I wanted to just put that out there. He does a great job.
He does a great job. His family, his dad served this county admirably for a long, long time, and he is as well. However, moving on. Gail.
I have two things, Mr. Chairman. One is, I'm here today specifically on this House vote to expand the OSHA town, township and fire companies, and it's House Bill 308. This is going to do a lot of stress to your municipalities. And I'll just give you one example. Most of the municipalities run on two full-time and maybe a part-time guy. OSHA requirements are going to end up wanting somebody to flag on both ends. But municipalities do not have the funding for all this stuff. All right, it just came to my attention here the other day, and I've been out of town, so I'm going to contact Representative Pickens because apparently it's already passed the House and it's going to the Senate. I would recommend that you guys jump on the bandwagon and contact Senator Yaw, whoever, because this is going to cause a lot of aggravation throughout Bradford County and other counties.
How does PSAT stand on that?
PSAT is the statewide organization.
It's Maine Township State Association for Townships, but PSAT. Pardon my language, PSAT sucks.
Okay.
Okay. The, uh, it can end up into a numerous amount of fines for townships, fire companies to become OSHA, OSHA requirements, not to mention the time, and the time when we're having a lot of trouble now, especially now with so many fire companies being mismatched with help. Nobody's volunteering anymore. Okay, we live in a society where we're just tolerant of everything and just ignore things, and we can't keep ignoring this. And I don't know what's going through the heads of our House and our Senate and Harrisburg thinking that this is going to be a good thing. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Gail.
Have one other question.
No, he's, two minutes, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't realize.
Got to keep his uniform, Russ. All right, James.
I'm not sure if you said this. How many bids did you get for the, um, for the landscaping? Um, to, the bid that you awarded to Sheddins Lock here, how many other bids were there?
There weren't any others. I didn't think there were.
And where does the money come from, the $12,500 that you're rewarding to Odyssey of the Mines?
Uh, our fiscal director could explain that better than we could. I think it's Act 13, but I'm not sure.
Yes, it's like a community fund.
Yes.
Okay.
We do YHAC. We've done other children's and kids programs and young adult programs, so we're proud to do them, by the way.
Yep.
Proud of our youth in this county.
Absolutely.
Can, what is the program that you have with, between the Single County Authority, the Drug and Alcohol, the Single County Authority and the Regional Valley Regional YMCA that you're re- re-authorizing or reviewing?
Do you have the...
Is that for this article?
Mm-hmm, I think so. But it's a reallocation of some funds.
Should I check with Maite?
Yeah, check with Maite. She could-
It's a pretty cool deal, actually.
She actually could give you the details on, it's a reallocation of some funds, is what it is.
Okay, I think that's, that's everything.
Phil?
Uh, I apologize for this earlier, but how did the donation for the Odyssey come about? Did somebody approach you or how did that happen?
Yep.
Well, you always have it.
This group approached us and came in and gave a presentation. It's a, it was a short notice thing that they didn't realize, they realized they were going to be going to Worlds, so they were wondering if they could reach out and and access some funds to get the, them and their families to, to participate out in Lansing, Michigan. World competition.
Odyssey, that's all I got.
All right.
You know, I was worried about you the other night. You must, we're out looking at storm damage.
Oh, yeah.
Because I drove by you, and I thought, that's Phil. So I turned around and went back, and you had vanished.
This is how I work. I always got my boots in my car, I'll tell you.
Yeah, well, I was a little worried. It was Long Route 6. I was a little worried about you.
All right.
Also, the, where does the $30,000 come from that you're giving to-
Act 13, it's through our Public Safety Grant Program that we do with, with firefighters, EMS.
Our sheriff is very, very active in that.
Yep. All right, entertain a motion to...
Okay. Um, first of all, I just, I try to be allowing of individuals, I'll just note this. As far as I understand, given that there was one bid, the lowest responsible bid.
The only responsible.
The only responsible bid. I guess I have not seen the demonstration of where there's, there's been a problem based on the information I'm receiving today from, you know, Michelle and from, from Daryl. So I will also note that Sheddins is the company that has worked with this county for a number of years. And as far as I can tell, there's never been an instance in which our clerk, notwithstanding her relationship with the ownership of that, or the owners of that company, have ever allowed that to sway your decision. So I don't want that to ever be, you know, anyone to come away from today's meeting with that understanding. I'll also note, um, we, a question you had raised with me at one point, James, was the question of whether any of the budget proposals at the federal government level would have an impact on the county. We are still in a wait-and-see mode. Things change, right? Budgets change. Budget proposals change as they work their way through Congress. We only have probably the information that you have. I'll direct your attention to the Office of Management and Budget, which was a letter to Susan, Senator Susan Collins, dated May 2nd, 2025. If you have questions, Philip, if you have questions about any of the proposed, whether it's a cut or whether it's an increase in funding, I would direct your attention. That's going to be your best bet. And then if you have further questions as to how one of those cuts, if adopted, would affect the county, you can certainly inquire then. But I, I would just say it's, it's early days, although you can, you can read it to see where, where priorities are set forth. Okay, so people can draw their own conclusions. And then the last thing I'm going to just ask is, as a point of privilege, the Troy High Speech and Debate Team is hosting on May 20th, 2025 at 6:00 PM in the Troy High School Auditorium, a night of patriotic readings. There's information on the, the, I think they took this down from the bulletin board, but it's going back up on the bulletin board out there. But it's, the students have been working very hard. And in full disclosure, I am also the team coach. But I know that the students have been working very hard, learning a lot about American history and world history as we have prepared the pieces, and they are very proud to be able to offer this to the public. And I would encourage everybody to come out. A free will offering will be taken, and all proceeds will benefit the Northern Tier Veterans Group. So.
Something tells me you were on that debate team at one time.
I, I had a fantastic coach named Nancy Cummings.
Nancy Cummings?
Nancy Cummings.
Now she related to the lumber company.
She would be Lee Cummings.
Okay.
Yeah, so Nancy was my coach. It was a wonderful program, but let's keep the focus on, it's a night of patriotic readings. I encourage everybody to come, and hopefully, everybody can get a little something out of it.
All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, but while we're doing, and go ahead and second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Second.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you. But I would encourage everybody to stay to watch a presentation on Odyssey of the Mines. Thing is, a really neat program. These kids did a phenomenal job preparing for this.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to tell you that I've worked with you guys for many years now, and you know me. If there's an issue, I bring it to you.
No.
Corruption, absolutely not here. But I've found that when somebody comes into your meetings, or our meetings, I've heard some here, the problem is they're mad about something else instead of actually addressing the issue. They want to go through everything else. If there's an ethics violation, file the charges, because if your charges are found unwarranted, you can sue that individual, and then that'll end that problem, okay? We as elected officials, we can't afford to be beat up every time you turn around, and I've been through the ethics investigations on numerous times, and they'll find us. Okay? So if you guys have done well, and somebody here is mad about something else other than what you're doing.
Did you sue the individuals that filed ethics complaints against you?
All right, Philip.
Did you sue the individuals that filed ethics complaints against you?